The meeting of the Board of Selectmen, a special meeting for Monday, April 24th. Please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to this one side and to states of America.
America.
Your republic, your state, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much. And so obviously, the purpose of today's meeting is to just review the comments. So the board can have discussions, decide next steps based on the public hearing we just had on the two proposed ordinances. What I'd like to do actually is for item number two is we did get the results today for the survey for the cannabis ordinance that. So I'd like to just share those with the board and for the public to see. And that might give some interesting perspective based on some of the comments that we saw in today's public hearing. So with that, I will share my screen. And. Okay, is that visible for you, Jaclyn?
Yes, looks good.
Is it, is it moving when I move it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, at home, because sometimes I notice it'll do it here, but not at home. So. So with this, this was the survey that was, I think, out for at least three weeks to a month for public input. And this was pulled together quickly today, so we haven't been able to really dig into it, but we did get the kind of numbers results back from this. We had 911 responses to the survey, which is great, I think. And it was overwhelmingly people that lived in Madison, so we didn't, or at least they said they lived in Madison, so we're trusting that people were being honest. But nonetheless, it was Madison residents. And I think age demographics, you know, it was kind of interesting to look at the age demographics of the largest group was actually. Which I was, I was a little surprised by that, but nonetheless, and I do want to make a comment, we did get a handful of written survey results that were turned to the senior center. I think it was a dozen or so that is not included in these numbers, just because we didn't have time to add in some of the written survey results. So this I was a little surprised about when I saw the numbers here. I'm definitely going to double check those, but it was interesting to see the participation number. The overall theme was that about 58%, if you add together the somewhat opposed and strongly opposed were opposed to zoning approval for cannabis. So that was kind of lumping together the strong and somewhat, but just to give an overall of where it was leaning, the direction was leaning more in terms of not allowing cannabis establishments through our zoning code here in Madison. The, the other thing was on the micro cultivation, it was not, it was a little bit less than the previous question. It was more like 55% that were opposed to zoning, allowing micro cultivation facilities. The, you know, impact on the town, I think this was kind of self evident in terms of about 44% thought there would be a negative effect. 31%, and then one said there would be no difference in terms of the town's economy. This was focusing on the town's economy, because as we know, one of the things with the state regulation or state law is that the town could actually tax the sale of cannabis if we were to have a retail establishment. In terms of priorities, I didn't get a chance to look at this in detail, but it just kind of lays out. There was a big, strong, you know, push in terms of keeping it away from children and public safety threats. And, you know, enforcement, if we were to allow sales. So heavy on kind of the enforcement, public safety side in terms of as being a priority. There is a question, number seven, was actually kind of an open ended question, so only a less than half the respondents actually wrote in an answer, and there tended to be, I will say vastly on the negative side, but you know, the board will get to review all those comments, but these are some of the themes that were kind of repetitive when we had the open ended in terms of the gateway drug, public safety, crime, keeping it away from children, traffic impacts, nuisance types of impacts. That was a common theme throughout this. And then, and I think it tended to be people who did respond to this question. It was a negative response. So it's not like we had a ton of positive things, like all the great things that it would do. It was more like, if you didn't want it, you're most likely going to write something negative. So. But the board can see all the detailed comments. Jaclyn did a great time putting a little summary together. And then in terms of location, you know, obviously the none of the above, I'm assuming are people that just didn't want it in town. So that was almost half of the respondents. And then you had people that looked at it as something more appropriate for commercial areas or like industrial. In terms of should it be near a school? I think this is pretty overwhelmingly at least a mile. That was a strong indication of what people's thoughts were. And that was, everybody responded to that. So, so that was overwhelming, that people didn't want it within a mile of a school. Once again, this was more open ended question about concerns about the retail sale and in this one had a little bit more responses, 513 versus the 9/11. But it was still kind of the same themes that, you know, it was going to be bad for property values. It was going to be bad for youth, gateway drug, crime. Different things. So we just tried to real quickly kind of highlight some of the themes with that of when people wrote responses in. This is relating to the sales tax on cannabis and how would, if we did actually tax for it, what would we want to use it for? And so there was a strong, I think, you know, mental health and kind of societal benefit type spending is the theme I saw here. Although in education, but then streets to gate, you know, projects, it was kind of a mixture. Didn't really get a chance, but they're like, if you're going to have it, then most people were spending it on something. And then the other survey question was here was relating to micro cultivation. There seemed to be a little bit of confusion on this question of people maybe didn't under, some people might not have understood what a micro cultivation facility was. There were some comments and things like that in the survey, but once again, it was still very similar. If you were kind of against it, then you were, you know, it was the same themes that, that were through the, you know, through this question as well in terms of the comments. The medical question, actually, because the town's zoning does allow medical cannabis facilities, distributor dispensaries. And this came out pretty much supporting most, 62% of residents wanted to maintain it in some way in their zoning regulations. So there didn't come across a message like, you know, no, now we want to ban it, you know, something we've allowed. We actually don't have any facilities in Madison. But if one were to come, it sounds like people would be okay with that based on the current zoning regulations. So that is the quick scenario there of the, of the survey results. And, and so, and I know we decided to conduct that in order to get a better idea of what the public thought on this issue, because there had not been as much attendance at previous public hearings. We did get some turnout tonight of the public commenting on cannabis. And so, you know, that was meant to help guide us in terms of our ordinance. So I don't know tonight how we want to, you know, we're not here to take action, but I think just hear some general thoughts on the board based on the feedback tonight. I don't know, Bruce, if you want to start.
Yeah, so I'm actually quite surprised that the feedback we got from that survey pretty closely in a qualitative way matches the limited input that we received over a period of eight or nine months and lines up pretty well with the actual ad hoc committee. Right? Remember I said that the committee was, was really split with a kind of a 60/40 majority for banning retail activities and 40% in favor of it. And, and this survey really did, you know, continue that. So I would say that if we're going to take any faith in this accumulation of data, it's been pretty consistent over the period of better than a year now. But that would seem to be the way the community feels. I think it's important to recognize the community is of two minds on this. It is, it is not a straight up overwhelming majority for one or the other, but.
Except for medical. Well, not overwhelming.
Because we kind of, that was a bonus question for us.
Right, right, right. I think that was overwhelmingly the status quo, it's something for the public, so.
My feelings on this haven't really changed since the last time we talked about it. I look at our youth and family services with their consistent messaging that has not wavered at all and continues to not waver that, you know, please don't bring this to town. And again, we're not arguing the pros and cons of marijuana to use. We're not, we're not debating whether or not it should be used in Madison. It's a legal recreational substance, full stop. So we're talking about the, the, the commercial presence in town and, and our school district has consistently messaged the same. And I think that on this topic, it's important that we take our direction from those two, two groups. We devote a lot of energy and resources into seeking their opinion and trusting their stewardship in the community. And I don't think this is the right time to step out of sanctuary.
I want to sort of build on that point, because I think that's a really important one, that we do have some experts in the room and experts in our community for sure. We've relied on them for feedback and for input along the way. It's participating on the committee and and other mechanisms. And certainly as the liaison to Madison Family Services, I hear the impacts on our children and our youth all the time. And so, you know, we're not here to debate the impact on the youth per se, because that's not necessarily the, the focus of this particular ordinance. We're focusing on retail. But we know how the system works, right? And by bringing it closer to our one mile, whatever that number was, to, to our youth. It's, it's more accessible. Is it accessible over 21? Yes. But and is it legal over 21? Yes. But the thing I learned that was also something that I hadn't really thought about from our expert in youth and family services. There's currently no potency gap for vape devices as well. So the potency issue is also another thing I think is important to consider when thinking about retail also. And I'm assuming you guys probably did talk about that, I'm sure, on your, on your committee, but. You know, right now there's no restrictions. And so I think that's, that's something that we need to be thinking about for sure. But again, we're not necessarily debating whether or not, you know, this is an impact on kids. We're just talking necessarily about retail and the retail sale. I am, my, my feelings have not changed either.
I think you guys both put it perfectly about the support as a board that we should be putting behind our school system, youth and family services, and also just being responsive to the feedback that we are receiving as a board from our community members. And I've been consistent with this along the way. And my feelings have not changed either in terms of not having the retail establishments here in town. As far as the medical sale of cannabis product goes, I think that we do need to have the resources available. We have the ordinances or the zoning in place for that, and I don't think that should change. I find, you know, believing that as is. But recreational retail, you know, be responsive to the community. Okay.
Well, shocking as it is, I was a child of the 60s and I did have hair, very long hair.
With a bullet.
Nevertheless, I do believe this should be regulated. I believe the majority of our citizens have sent us a signal as to how they would like it regulated. And I guess like Bruce, I'm very comfortable with the existing proposal that we put out to the public to react to. So. So I'm in favor of continuing onward with what we have.
I mean, I have to echo the similar comments. I mean, I don't look at this as putting, making a value judgment at all about cannabis. To me, the state has, it's a legal substance, and that's a personal decision that every resident in Madison can make. The question to me is more about do we see that as a business opportunity, economic opportunity for the town of Madison? And I don't think it does fit with our general perception of zoning. You know, we tend to be very restrictive and limited about the types of business, commercial businesses we have in town. We do have a lot of liquor stores, and I will agree to that, but there's also a hundred year history of blue laws in the state of Connecticut and restrictions on liquor, liquor sales that had, it took time to loosen up, right? So I feel like that we're kind of just out of the gate, we're new with this legalization, and it would be prudent to put some restrictions on. And 10, 20 years from now, it might be very different. People, the public might demand this to have a local place to go. I know every town in the state of Connecticut is wrestling this with this right now. And there will be, we're not denying residents the ability to use this product or to access this product. Because I think Branford has already approved one, so we know there's already on the shoreline an opportunity. New Haven is going to have different facilities available. And, and I'm sure there'll be other towns that choose to, to take advantage of the economic opportunity. I just don't think it necessarily aligns with what, how we've tended to approach commercial businesses in our town. So that, that's kind of my philosophy. Knowing that this is actually a strong result, one direction, if we were to hold a referendum, we don't get 58% on a lot of things, you know. So in that sense, it does have a strong sign that the, there is a majority, a strong majority that was leaning against this. And I think this is, we're early in this process and that perception might change. I spoke to somebody, actually it was our strategic planning advisor, they talked about Fort Collins chose not to sell cannabis when the state of Colorado legalized it, and they missed out on millions in revenue. And it was a big, you know, bad decision at that time for the town of Fort Collins. I don't think we're going to be making millions on the sale of cannabis, because we don't have a lot of places to sell it. We don't have the ability to have a big commercial business here. So. And I want to be respectful for, you know, the public's concern with this. So I guess I'm echoing some more support to, to continue to move forward with prohibiting it. I know that there's been some specific comments. I know our town planner had made comments on the draft. I don't know if we want to talk about those, not like changing the language, or maybe that's what we do at our next meeting. There's some things that need to be refined in the draft.
You're talking about technical.
Technical, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think just rely on counsel who's vigorously.
Sorry. So.
As if she has something to say.
Yes.
If I recognize, thank you so much.
And I apologize, I didn't introduce you, Carrie. So this is our town council.
The thing that is like flashing up in my face at this point is you should know that this draft actually prohibits medicinal cannabis.
Right. Right. We know we're going to have to make that change. Yeah.
I just want to make sure everybody who's sitting there tonight, talking about this ordinance, appreciates that the way it's currently drafted, no cannabis, not medicinal and not recreational. And I will do whatever you direct me to do to revise it. But I do want to make sure that everybody understands, because I've heard a lot tonight about not being concerned about medicinal. But I just want to make sure everybody realizes that the draft in front of you prohibits all of it. So.
Yeah, and that, that I think the message is we're going to be amending that language because of the feedback, and I think there isn't any concern here for medical purposes. I think everybody's supportive of allowing that still under the regulations in place through zoning. But those are the tech, I guess the technical things more, because we realized that was, this was modeled off another town. We just wanted to get something up there to get reaction from the public. So we're going to be needing to make some changes to reflect what we want.
Understood. I just wanted the other.
Yeah, no, fair point for the public's benefit. I guess I knew that in my mind, but.
No, no problem. I'll, I'll zip it now.
And so the thought is we'll come back with a revised draft with those amendments. There might be one or two cleanup items in this. I can't remember if there's some comments. Yeah, yeah, exactly. So we'll come back with a revised draft, but remove the medical references. I do want to also comment, the other thing that the board needs to do is amend our ordinance for public use on for relating to smoking, because our smoking ordinance actually refers to tobacco products. So, but we would want to extend that to, I think, cannabis related products. So we're, we're comparable with how it's being treated, and that's another change. That's not going to be part of this ordinance. That's just updating our other ordinance. So that'll be changed. So anything, anything else on that? No? So we'll come forward to our next meeting with a revised draft, and the board can then move forward on that. So moving on to item number two, or three, excuse me, is the proposed draft floodplain ordinance. We have a public comment at the end of the meeting. Yeah, at the end. Yeah, yeah. So with that, you know, I guess we'll do the same process. If there is, Bruce, if you want to kick it off, any comments based on the public feedback so far with floodplain ordinance?
Where to start? So as somebody who is not anywhere near a floodplain, I wait, I know way too much about this. I've, I've really tried to go into the source documents and get the tone and tenor of what FEMA has been angling towards, what they're trying to accomplish, and then working within the regulation, understand the levers that we have to pull as a community, because by and large, they're, they're very, very limited. When you take the FEMA document and then the overlay, the building code, and then, you know, figure out what's left for us to be able to do. We've talked a lot about the substantial improvement. And, and clearly, the federal government wants communities to include everything that happens to the house to be part of that calculation. But they also talk about modulating look backs. So they talk about damage, storm related damage and historical look backs, and then look at improvements and maybe assigning a different look back. For instance, in the extreme, the look back could end the day the building permit is closed. And the homeowner would be ready to move on to the next project. Whereas storm related damage would, would maybe be, you know, well, we've talked about the one year, right? Some communities go, they go whole hog and they go into the life of the structure, which I don't even know how you administer. So I'm definitely in favor of recognizing the difference between good stewardship and repairing a house that's been substantially damaged due to some weather. And, and this doesn't discriminate between the type of weather event. I mean, the, the, the house could lose a roof because of wind and be subject to a flood ordinance. And that's a difficult one for me to reconcile, but it is. It's there. The desk reference specifically says it is not the intention of this regulation to discourage normal maintenance. And, and I am guilty of picking things out of context, but boy, that stuck with me. If their intent is not to discourage normal maintenance, then I don't think anything we do should discourage normal maintenance. And then lastly, and then I'll move on, it's easy to think about the oceanfront properties and the impact. It's the stuff that makes headlines when the storm comes in. It's what gets on TV. It's, 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 it's a real area of concern, but the floodplain is all over Madison. And for, you know, for every very, very, very nice house on the water, there is a much more modest house somewhere else in Madison that is subject to this ordinance. And, you know, we've, we've had some applied problems where I just think the, the homeowner has been unfairly caught up in the machine of this ordinance. And, you know, we're talking about modest homes with people of modest means. At the same time, we're talking about those, how do we get those same people to age in place? And if we're making their homes too expensive to stay here, then we need to reconcile that with our other stated objective of keeping them here longer. And I see these two running headlong into each other in certain areas. So as a theme, as we move through this, this, this ordinance and move the draft along, I'm going to be looking to advocate for those, for those ideas. And I have more to say, but I'm going to stop for now.
Should we do the same order?
Sure. Go ahead, Scott.
You can't contain himself.
I get excited when he talks. Couple thoughts. I, I think, listen, we, we've had a heck of a conversation and debate both publicly and amongst the Board of Selectmen for quite some time. I think we all collectively recognize that sea level rise is real, right? It will impact our town. It is impacting our town. And I think we're trying to be thoughtful about what we do with that. At the same token, we have these wonderful homeowners that we care about and our residents in our town. And, you know, nobody, I think, wants to put an ordinance in place that, you know, harms our, our homeowners, that, that, you know, makes repairs not attainable to our house. So I am certainly not in favor of that. I think the place we got to the one year is a smart one, and we're following FEMA at this point. Could that change down the road? Absolutely. Could FEMA change their mind? Absolutely. But again, I think, you know, we're not trying to do this to harm anybody. I am. I do want to spend a little more time, I think, thinking about the, the average repair. I, I think that resonated tonight for sure. As, as I think about this. And then the other piece that, that, you know, I have to say, I agree with many of the residents who spoke up tonight, but I'm, I'm not in favor of incarceration. It's not a thing to me. I think that is the difference. I'm saying it out loud. And so I think that's something that we need to really think about as a Board of Selectmen. So anyways, I would, I'm strongly suggesting that to our town attorney to help us look at that.
I agree with that point wholeheartedly, Scott. And I feel like that is something, if I remember correctly, that we discussed at a meeting over in the Board of Education room, is that all of us were not in favor of those criminal penalties, incarceration for, you know, our residents doing maintenance on their homes. And realistically speaking, everybody's home, doesn't matter what neighborhood you're in here in town, it's going to need a new roof at some point, and asphalt shingles are expensive. And when you're, when you're considering also the assessments or the appraisals rather, I'm okay personally, if the homeowner wants to incur their own expense for that, because when I look at our home valuations happening on a three year cycle, just in the last instance that we went through with the market changing so drastically from pre-COVID to now, those appraisals, they're not accurate, you know, for folks that are trying to do work on their homes now. So if that's something that the homeowner is willing to incur the expense for, to have an independent appraisal done by somebody that is certified, that the state and, you know, lending companies and insurance companies have certified to do their job, then who are we to say that their appraisal is not accurate? that their appraisal is not accurate? Okay.
I'm going to start out at the philosophical level. I think I'm not I'm neither a liberal or conservative on this issue. I think I'm a minimalist. I believe that the role of town government here is to only put in place as much regulation as is needed to protect the health and economic vitality of the community. And as such, I wanted to continue, to continue to encourage homeowners to invest in their property. I think that's good for the town. I think it's great for the homeowners. And perhaps a, a role of town government, which isn't exactly in this ordinance, but is is for us to continue to provide information to help owners understand how to protect their properties in the near future. And I think that's a very valid role for us to do, because I'm not sure everybody really has access to that. In terms of the three issues that were raised tonight by a number of folks here, I would like to learn more from our assessor and perhaps from town council about the distinction between appraisal and assessment. And Peggy is the CEO of the town. I'm very interested in learning how that might complicate town operations. So I need more information on it. In terms of this substantial improvement issue, once again, I believe we should be encouraging people to invest in their homes. And I'm not quite sure why we want to make it more difficult for people to invest in their homes. And so I would be looking for the most liberal definition of repairs that we could possibly agree to. And finally, when it comes to penalties, I think we should only be talking about flagrant violations. And we shouldn't be getting lost in the weeds on, on minimal kinds of things. So I think we're on the right track. And I, I like the, the guts of the proposal that we've come up with so far. And I think these three three areas could use a bit of tweaking. I need to learn more. But I'm, I'm interested in moving ahead on this with the basic document that we produced. And I'm just refining those three items.
Can I go again?
I'm happy to let you say.
So one of the things one of the things that I think we should leave as an action item for Carrie is to really sharpen up the levers that we can pull. I don't think we can go out and change the definition of substantial improvement. I think that that is going to be set in stone. I think the lever we're going to have to be able to pull is, if I'm using the word rightly, correctly, bifurcating normal improvements and damage repairs and treating them along two separate paths. And, and most importantly, to look back, because we can't change the 50%, right? That's not a lever we can pull. So, you know, we're going to have to play the game. I have a technical question for Carrie. There is a variance procedure outlined in FEMA, and astonishingly, accessibility, handicap accessibility is not a reason. And that seems like we're setting up two laws to, to conflict with each other. And so we'd need some, some clarification on that.
Yeah, so, you know, Bruce, that's near and dear to my heart, because it's the same thing as far as zoning at this point in this state. When you look at the Americans with Disabilities Act, there are often situations where you need to make accommodation, and the general rule doesn't spell it out, but yet you still have to comply. And so I don't necessarily see this as foreclosing that, this regulation as foreclosing that, but since you've opened the door, there's a couple of things I would like to say. And one is that, you know, obviously, this, this regulation is patterned heavily, almost verbatim, from the template approved by both FEMA and the Connecticut DEP. And in consistent with the National Flood Insurance Program. And so, you know, to your point, Bruce, figuring out which triggers you can pull without totally putting the kibosh on your ability to participate is, is something that you have to be very careful about. The only other thing I would say, and again, to your point, Bruce, is in talking with staff and in thinking about how staff is going to equally and fairly enforce any floodplain ordinance, things have to be very clear. There have to be, to the best of your ability, bright, bright line rules. And so, again, to your point, when you start to try to define repairs, you could be putting your staff in peril unless we can come up with some black and white rules for them to follow. You don't want to, you don't want to have a situation where your staff is forced to make a judgment call that's not consistent with a judgment call that another staff member made a couple of years before, right? I mean, that just, that just puts you in peril. And I think that's one of the reasons that the, the regulations, well, one of the two reasons. One is you want to have bright line rules so that everything is enforced equally and fairly across the board. And number two, you have to remember what their goal is. And that is to push people towards FEMA compliance as quickly as possible. And so the state and FEMA are not going to support eliminating repairs from this substantial improvement category. However, you have also decided that you're going to limit the lookback to one year. So I think in the grand scheme of things, I am not sure how impactful that would be unless there was a real disaster. But I just throw this out there for your thoughts and your consideration, is that, you know, you have to remember, whatever, whatever we craft, not only do you want to make sure that it's compliant enough that you don't lose your, your ability to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program, but it also has to be clear enough that your staff can, can apply it in an even-handed, non-arbitrary, non-capricious, non- ambiguous manner. And that's going to be a tough, tough thing to do. But I, I am open to whatever, you know, I am your servant, you tell me, and we'll do our best, but you need to keep these things in mind.
And then lastly, just to Jen's point about the independent appraisal, I mean, the FEMA does specifically discuss the the phenomena of a appraisal for the purposes of establishing a grant list is a document that immediately becomes stale and acknowledges other valuation methodologies that can and should be applied. So I would add to that my editorial that exercise done to calculate the grant list for the purposes of taxes is not necessarily going to be a true market representation of the, the house or the land. They're, they're done for different purposes. And so I appreciate administratively relying on that one number, because it's simple and it's right there, and it's professionally done, but it's not exactly done to the purpose that I think FEMA was thinking. Why don't they acknowledge that and talk about that? And, and they talk about different cost methodologies that, that, that can be employed by communities for it. So I think the point is well taken from this group that there, there should be the flexibility to, to go out and present a an appraisal from a licensed, qualified inspector in the state of Connecticut. If they've gone through that vetting process, we should be able to rely on that, that work product.
If I may, Matt.
We just have to go in with our eyes on.
If I, I'm sorry, if I could just respond to that, as somebody who's been the municipal attorney for a very long time and does a lot of tax appeals, I have, I frankly have concerns. So when, when the evaluation is done pursuant to a revale, it is an appraisal. And the only difference between an appraisal and an assessment is the fact that the appraisal represents the fair market value. The assessment is what by statute they're allowed to apply the mill rate to, which is 70% of fair market value. I understand that a revale is good for five years and property values change. But where I, where I get, where we get into trouble, I think, again, is if an appraisal comes in that the town doesn't agree with. And now puts you in a position where you either have to go out and get a competing appraisal to establish what you, unless you're going to take the position that whatever the homeowner provides to you as an appraisal is what you're going to accept across the board, you're, you're putting yourself in a quandary again where there may be a disagreement. I mean, that's why we have tax appeals all over the place, right? Where you may have a disagreement on the valuation of the property. And that's why, where again, a bright line rule is so important for your staff to apply. And again, I make no judgment call. It's a policy decision. You all, it's up to you. But I just, I have to throw out there that every time you step away from a bright line rule, you're, it, it becomes a quandary. And so I just wanted to make that comment.
So I appreciate that there may be less than scrupulous appraisers out there. But that is not our fight. That, that's, that's the state's fight. Reading out of the handbook, right? And it's, I think this is why I feel this way. Property appraisals that are prepared by a professional appraiser according to standard practices of the profession are the most accurate and reliable method for determining market value. That is the opening sentence under Appraisals in the FEMA Handbook. I, I don't know how they could be any clearer in their intent on this. I appreciate there's, the real world has problems.
Oh, yeah. My experience, my experience is not consistent with that statement, Bruce. I'm just going to say.
Well, and that, that's maybe, you know, I have two minds in this situation, because I have the homeowner mindset as a, as a resident and owns a property in the floodplain. So I've lived and breathed these regulations myself. And I recused myself previously because we had a, we had actually an application and we're doing a project when we were talking about this last, that would have, the lookback period would have had a significant impact on our ability to do that project. I don't have that going on right now, but I am a homeowner. So, and then, but I'm also CEO of the town. And I, one thing I've learned with dealing with these decisions with the public is consistency in how you treat the public. Everybody's treated the same. And so you have to have the bright line that Carrie's talking about, very specific definitions, very specific rules. If you're going to start saying, repair, what is repair? Repair can be a million different things. And, and, and residents will come in and argue, this is a repair. I, you know, I had to replace all my siding with, you know, cedar. And, you know, and so there's going to be those battles that our staff would then have to have with residents about what is a necessary repair to sustain the property versus what is a substantial improvement, right? So we, if we're going to go in that direction, it has to be very specific. Because otherwise, we're going to open ourselves to, we've already had litigation relating to this, and it costs the town a lot of money. Because people aren't going to like the hair, to get, hear the answer that they're getting. And they're going to push, and they're going to push, and they're going to appeal, and then they're going to sue. So unless we have a bright line and we have a lot of specifics on this, I think that's the only way you can move forward. I'm looking out for the benefit of all taxpayers, because I don't want to have frivolous lawsuits against the town, because people don't like the answer they're getting. And then in terms of the appraisals, not everybody can afford an appraiser. And so now you've created inequity. So, and I'm not saying that's necessarily wrong. A lot of towns do find a way to do this, and we talked about this with staff. There are steps you can take to go through this, where it might ultimately go to an appraisal. I have two minds on this issue, but I just want to talk about, once again, consistency and equity across all fairness to all taxpayers and all residents and all property owners. Everybody should be treated the same under, under government. So so I, 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 these are just things that I struggle with, knowing though that we all recognize that structure value oftentimes is, 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 you know, does not adequately reflect the prop, you know, the true value of a property right now because of the five-year process that we go through here with revale. So it's not an easy thing. So I just ask that the board wants to go in this direction and kind of open the doors up on this. It has to be crystal clear, the process, who qualifies, the definitions have to be clear, or else we are exposing the town to a lot of litigation or pushback and appeals. So that's my comment on that.
So I, I think as, as a general direction, we're talking about creating a set of rules that make the hurdle, I don't want to say lower, but maybe make it easier to get across the finish line for homeowners. So would in effect ratchet down that to satisfaction. At least that's the way I'm, I'm thinking about it. I agree, we've got to come up with, with clear things. That's the, that's Carrie's burden.
But to be honest, a lot of this is going to be the staff in the field from experiencing, knowing what property owners do to, they're just wanting to do their projects. It's not, they're not trying to do anything evil or terrible or break the law. They just want to make a change in their home. So how do they make it happen, right? So I think it's though, so that we don't have those conflicts, there has to be clarity. So Vinnie understands this is the list of what a repair is, or do we have a cap dollar amount or percentage or something that is, you know?
And so this is why I say I don't think definitions around repairs is a lever that we can pull. The, the, nor can we change fundamentally the formula for 50%. However, we can change the denominator in that equation by allowing homeowners to, to come with us with, with appraisal. I, I dare say a homeowner who's coming to the town with a, a repair that is, or an improvement or a project that is approaching 50% of the value of the structure, will probably find a couple of hundred dollars for the appraisal. So I get that it is an extra expense, but people that are contemplating these types of numbers, if if it's a very, very small percentage of the house, you're happy to live with the town's number. So to plug it into the, to the equation, it's not going to be a problem. So I, I think you know, that's it. The other one that I don't know, truly an open question. It strikes me that our land and structure valuations are wildly out of balance. Why can't we rebalance the assessed or appraised number to put more value on the structure, at least the rebuild? I can't rebuild my house for what it's on the town field card. And, and I would argue that probably nobody can.
Well, that, that's a conversation, I mean, they're under very strict guidelines, Carrie, correct, about how assessors have to approach valuation. So that's like a whole.
So if, so if we, if we can't do that.
They use formulas, but I just want to, I just want to point out, Bruce, that, and again, I'm not, I'm not defending again, other than the bright line rule thing, that mantra they over and over, because being a municipal attorney, you don't have bright line rules, you're in trouble. But when it comes to the valuation for land or building or whatever, whenever your notice comes out, whenever your new assessment comes out, you have an ability to appeal. And before you even do that, let me be clear, you get an, a meaning informally. You get an, a, a meeting informally with the revow company and the assessor. And then you have a right to appeal to the BAA, the Board of Assessment Appeals and say, hey, I think, you know, the land value should be this and the house should be that. And all of that precedes any need to go to court and appeal your, your valuation. So I, I, I don't want you to feel like the property owners have no recourse if they disagree with how their valuation was allocated. Because they do. They absolutely do. They have, you know, three shots at it. So, you know, I, I just throw that out there for your consideration. And again, in support of my bright line rule mantra.
I think it would be helpful if the board is leaning and wanting to allow these types of appraisals if we get a little bit more understanding about other towns do it. You know, if our neighbors are doing this, what is their, what are the rules? The qualifications for appraisals? When they can be submitted? You know, that type of thing, because I think I would want to understand that better from a practical operational standpoint about how other towns make this work.
I like where you're going with that, Peggy. Um, in, in my language, I'd like to see if we can establish bright red lines. And if we can't, then we're going to have to do something different. But other towns seem to have gotten somewhere on this. So let's, let's get more information to this board about how other towns have done it and see if we can live with it.
Keep in mind though, a lot of other towns have longer look backs than we have. So, so well, but that's what I'm saying. It's like, I think it's a balancing act though, in terms of, you know, that moving progress and incentive to encourage investment and, and making your properties more resilient, right? So you, you know, so I think we need to balance that. But I think it's worth looking at what other towns do, how they handle the appraisal approach. And I think I, I wouldn't want to comment on this issue about penalties and things like that. We're referring to the building code. And the building code is the one, just if I'm correct, Carrie, it's the building code that has this in-state statute. So this isn't Madison saying, we're going to go and put the people in jail. This is just referring to that Vinnie lives with every day. So if somebody is a gross violation, Vinnie, if you could just spend a second, like, when does this go to jail time? And when it's the state that would be doing this, right? It wouldn't be the town of Madison recommending that we send people to jail. But this is areas, you had mentioned though, that it's the housing court and it typically is dealing with landlords, right? That are. So, but, but so we're applying basically the same standards if somebody else in, in Madison did a, did not get permitted into substantial changes without permits. There's a, there's a enforcement process that that homeowner would go through. It's just taking that same process and, and also applying it to the floodplain zone violations. So it's not creating some overly burdensome. That's my understanding about it. And then maybe Carrie, if you could weigh in on this, but.
Again, again, it, it, it is citing the building code and the types of enforcement and penalties that are authorized under the building code. So again, I think, you know, as mentioned already, you know, it would have to be pretty egregious before anybody referred something to the police department to enforce and, and potentially issue or arrest somebody for a misdemeanor. But this does go to what I talked to you about earlier, Peggy, which is that in reviewing your ordinances, you have a couple of situations where you, you use a citation procedure, but it's specific to those two, those two ordinances. And I, you know, not to, not to mix everything up at this point, but I do think that as we're working through all of these new ordinances, we should seriously consider a citation ordinance pursuant to Connecticut general statute seven, one fifty-two C that would apply to any ordinance where a citation is authorized. So that you don't have to recreate the wheel in every single ordinance. And I just throw that out there because I do think it needs to get on the plate. And I need, I think we need to talk about it a little bit more. But the point is, is that, and again, consistent with Deep's recommendations, they're citing to the building code and the, the penalty, potential penalties that are provided for to the building code. So that's where that arises from. You know? Has it ever happened? Have, has Madison, to your recollection, ever had somebody thrown in jail for a building code violation? I mean, again, these are the egregious situations where somebody willfully, I don't know, builds an apartment building with no smoke detectors and no carbon monoxide detectors and puts a substandard heating system in there and lets people rent it and they all, you know, die from carbon monoxide or something. I mean, I, 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 I guess I don't. I, I understand that people read that and think, oh my God, I'm going to get thrown in jail if I do something without a, without a permit. But I don't think that's the reality.
I just wanted to clarify that. I know that there's been some conversation about it. So if we were to actually try to carve out, we would once again, take something very, we'd have to have a carve out just for floodplain. And I don't know how that, I think there would be a conflict in some ways because the floodplain is, is based on the building code, right? So that's where I'm not sure how that would work.
Would it more simply be served by just that section referring to the applicable state statute?
That's what, yeah.
It does work, but.
But if the statute changes now, our ordinance goes out of sync. We did this with the charter in a lot of places where we didn't try to mimic or repeat the language in the state statute. We just said, refer to it. Go back, go back here to look for penalties and consequences.
Under section nine, right?
Nine point five, you're saying to just leave it at that pursuant to section twenty-nine. General statutes, any person who violates any provision of this ordinance shall be subject to the fines and penalties set forth therein or something like that? Is that, is that what? Is that what you're suggesting, Bruce?
Those nine point five, yeah, pursuant to section.
Yes, yes, it's nine point five.
And so, but there was something about the enforcement piece. Is there a duplicative? I think we were going to look to see if there was like duplicative language in eight versus nine. I think we can look at that again and see if it needs to be tightened up. But basically right now, it just is really basically a referral to the, to the, the state statute.
Yeah. But I mean, Bruce makes a good point because, you know, if that statute gets amended, fines go down, fines go up, whatever penalties change. It's, it's probably not a horrible thing to just refer to the statute and, and leave it at that. Did he said that it's also a building, you know, that it's a building code violation or referred to the building department from the floodplain enforcement officer for enforcement. So.
Okay, so we, we can look at those two sections again and just see if it can be tightened or somehow clarified in there.
I don't, Bruce, did you actually respond? Is that what you were thinking? Let's just have it refer to the statute?
But yeah, that's, if that's workable and clear, it, it takes a little bit of the scary language out. And, and doesn't cause us to revise the document every time the state changes their mind. So.
Yeah. I mean, it would be pursuant to section.
Right now, we will public comment at the end, but.
Yeah, as it may be amended.
Okay. But I think the objective is clear, right? Following building code. And so I think that's one that we can at least address because otherwise having separate, a separate enforcement or violation thing is, is I think more problematic, right? For this ordinance. But so in just in terms of then the other topics that we talked about, we'll do some more research on the appraisal piece to see how that could possibly work if we're going to do it. And then I guess the question is, you know, if we change that, would we, we still be looking to somehow have this repair definition and yeah, and see what the choices are. And I think, I was, go ahead. Yeah. Yeah.
In relevance to trying to break out some of the items that are substantial improvement.
She's with deep.
Are you going to break this out? There's no way to track properly. No way to get the twenty-eight, the forty-five. And then in regards to the appraisal. We have one instance that it was just impossible to come up with that number. But we don't, you know, we don't have inconsistency. I've been there for fourteen years. Never outside. And it's, I don't know any fault of fairness, so a number, you know, the average appraisal is like seven, seven fifty, ten or ten. Not a lot of money. We spend a couple of hundred grand, we have a house. But if you're going to pay that number, too much hard to track consistently on how we do things now. You'd say, you're going to take that number and use that for the tax base? They want to have that number and they want to keep their free appraisal value from the assessment.
Can you, do you mind speak a little louder, Vinnie? Sorry for people to hear. So I think the point he was trying to make was more, okay, now we've established a value for purposes of the floodplain ordinance. How does that compare relative to the tax valuation, right? Or the assessment, assessors praise valuation, so of the structure for tax purposes. So a question was, could, if this is submitted as part of the floodplain permitting process, is that's now a document, can the assessor now use that as a referral for tax purposes?
Well, I have a question. What if a home sells, right? So it sells in the middle of its valuation cycle? When that home sells, your tax isn't changing, correct?
Does the assessor re, revow the house based on that transaction?
Uh, now, so if I may, it's, it's every five years. I'm sorry, I'm choking. It's every five years. But a sale during that five years will be relevant to the next revow for sure. And the other thing that allows them to change the value of the property is improvements. So if somebody.
Biggest mechanism.
You can, though, the new owner can appeal their taxes by using their own sale as a reason to appeal your tax base. So the new owner could come in and say, you know, if they paid less than what the value was, say, wait a second, I just paid this clearly, you know, and you could use that as the basis to get your assessment changed.
So I wouldn't, I wouldn't be. Oh, I'm not going to be surprised.
I went through the EB, I went through the vision. Somebody wants to write me a check for one one, I'll take it today.
Yeah. So I would not, I would not be concerned about the, the disconnect between a an individual structure appraisal, a private appraisal and the town appraisal. And, and I wouldn't worry about overlaying them because they're two different exercises done for two different purposes. And consistent with the way we treat transactions on houses, just because a homeowner has an appraisal, that doesn't necessarily change their contribution to the grant list. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry about those two things.
Right, that was, that was my thinking. So, uh, so we can look at the, uh, so we'll look at the appraisal process and figure out how that would work and and what guidelines would be put in place. And then we'll look at this. I just don't know how to, because I don't think there's an example in the state Connecticut for us to look at where people would change the definition, right? It sounds like that. I, I just, you said, Al, you wanted both options. I just don't know. If we have any option, I mean, according to the state, there's really no way to do that. And I think the staff is kind of like, okay, that's putting a lot of subjectivity. That's the one I was looking for, right? In terms of their hand. So and once again, it's about being consistent, no matter who's sitting in those seats in town, uh, consistency of treatment. The beauty of doing, you know, using the assessor's appraised value for the structure is, it doesn't matter who's in town government. Everybody's treated the same, same process, the same number. So, yeah, but I think though that you're trying to get to this issue about what tools do we have, right? To help people be able to make some modest modifications or improvements in their home. And that's one, the denominator changed to Bruce's point. So that's one that other towns are using to do that.
And I'd like to see how they're doing.
Yeah, okay. So we'll, we'll look at that and see where we come out on that. And then change some of the language in here a little bit cleaner on the building code. We'll come back for another discussion. Can't get this done. But I think we've made some progress here at isolating some areas. Yeah. Okay, good, good. And I think it would be helpful for maybe the next meeting to have input about Practica. I think they just want to make sure they understand the rules of the game. So we don't put the town in a precarious situation of, uh, kind of nuisance lawsuits. And I, and I am concerned about that, but I think we're clear and we're consistent, we'll, we'll be fine. So. Okay. Well, thank you, Carrie. We'll, we'll move on and I'll, I'll follow up with you and we'll talk a little bit more about some of the modifications with that at our next meeting.
You all.
Okay, thank you. I guess with that, then the next item is citizens comments. And I'm sure there's some citizen comments. So I will. Well, she can listen. Carrie, if you want to just listen to the comments, but.
I, I thought I was.
If you have a question or a submitted writing, you know, we can try to get you an answer to that, but we won't be doing that now.
Oh, good.
Yeah. So we'll open this up to citizens comments. Hands are raised. Your hand is raised. Go ahead. If you state your name and address. Okay.
Once again, people have such a distorted view of what the world is like. No one's going to tell a, a diabetic not to take their insulin, but they'll tell someone like myself suffers from a variety of issues. They'll deny me my medicine because they don't like cannabis. It's absurd. The store location is critical. It should be nowhere near kids, just like a liquor store. But it should be accessible so that people that have a need will go to it. Nobody in the state of Connecticut right now, the financial situation with the entire industry is, is in, in one of the growers in the state is already said they're not going to continue operations. So the supply for medical patients, of course, recreational patients is an issue and it has to all be worked out. People do not go into a dispensary or a retail store and walk out with hypodermic needles and methadone and all of that. That's not what it is. They walk out with a little bag. Sometimes it's in their pocket. You don't even know that they were in the store and then bought some. So what we're warning that they don't stand outside with smoke, they go home and they enjoy it. All these issues that are being raised are so far from the real world. It's offensive. It's like people are living under a rock. And I hate to say it, but it sounds like they just sit there and watch the Boston. It's offensive. This is medicine. This is the real world in twenty twenty-three. Get used to it. Get used to it, some that never should have been able to leave them in the first place. You don't know why, but everybody says it's a fall.
Okay, well, well, thank you for your comments, um, and. Okay, thank you, all right, please go ahead, public. Yeah.
I'm trying to do it in order as you spoke.
Yeah.
Just make sure you do your name and.
T D Stone, ten six three Boston Post Road. Uh, Bruce, you were talking about how it's not just people in Middle Beach, people in other areas of town, I agree with you. My husband Heinz grew up the town, and our number was by no means accurate, but we did stop people on the streets and said, where do you live? Is your house in the floodplain zone? And then counted in from there, we counted over five hundred houses. That doesn't include anything north Madison, or might be near a lake or river, so there's a lot of people that are in fact. impacted by any, um, issues with the floodplain ordinance. Um, Al. My belief, and you can verify this with me, the number that, that is the fifty percent number is the appraised value of the structure, not the land. Of no accessory buildings, it's not assessed, and people throw assessed and appraised around, so I just wanted to make that clear. Um, Jen, in terms of you agreeing with an appraisal professional, I couldn't agree with you more. Part of the reason I agree with that is the valuation that's done by vision appraisal. Uses to identify what parameters they use in setting up what that number is. You cannot find it anywhere online saying, what are you using for your numbers to come up with your number? They refuse to identify it anywhere, and I don't know if that's a corporate policy or what, but I looked, I've searched, I can't find it anywhere. Um, any licensed professional appraiser in the state of Connecticut has standards that they have to adhere to. They're going to be using comparative values of nearby homes that have sold similar size and more in structure. I don't think you're going to see a drastic difference from what we're getting from the revow. Maybe ten or twenty thousand, I don't think it's, I think some people are thinking, oh, it's going to be, a homeowner should be using this as a tool. I don't see that, I see it as if someone has done improvements on a house since the last time it was sold and wasn't affected. In the, in the previous revow, yes, you might see that, but I don't think you're gonna see people using it. As a way to get a bigger number to look for. Um, and then Scott, um. I, um, in terms of encouraging keeping the one-year look back, I couldn't agree with that more, and it kind of goes into what Peggy said also. Um, you know, you're talking about, oh, let's refer to other towns, that's since unique compared to any other town on the shoreline that we compare to. Brantford is bigger, Sabre is bigger, they have business, they have industry, they have light industry. Um, Clinton and Westbrook, different towns for various different reasons. I don't think we can bitch and bawl, we can certainly look at it, but I don't think it's something that we should rely on as a reason to make a decision. We are a unique town in terms of the housing stock that we have on shoreline compared to any of them. If you look at the shoreline in Clinton and Westbrook, and to a large extent, Old Sabre and Brantford. And, well, Hilton doesn't really count, I'm just saying why, just because their, their topography. All of those, all of those areas have lost the charm of the shoreline. You have a modern, modern structure next to a Tudor, next to someone's vision of what a house in the heavens look like. In new structure where they've torn down all cottages. We have a very neat group of, of antique and historical cottages along our shoreline, many of which are still seasonal. And then, um. In terms of, um, maintenance. You know, I, I, I don't know the answer to that, I mean, I, I would think if someone has paint peeling on their house and they want to repaint. The peeling paint, I would think that would be normal maintenance and not. Structural improvement, so to speak, but then again, that is something you're fine to have to deal with. I think that there are minor repairs like that that people make to keep their house looking nice. That should certainly be allowed, um, without having to trigger, uh, the, the loan permitting process.
Okay, thank you, yeah, Kim, yeah.
Um, I'd like to. That, um. I loved your, your, um, comment about last, last things. Just for the record, I'm Texas road, we're just near the water. We, I'm a four day, I'm a widow, we have a single lady. So it's not just like north of the Austin Coast Road, which I'm at, almost near the water. Women like me aspire to divorce, who cannot absolutely not afford seven thousand dollars a month. It means I am, it's not a hundred thousand, it's more. Enjoying that people like me, it's not just people that are far away from the shore, it's people like me that, like, frankly, they're a lot of here, I don't believe it before. Um, in terms of a bright line standard. As a lawyer, I would have to say that if that's what case law is, I'm hearing about, as we all know, case law is about standards. But I would say that, I said that, that when there's so much room for gray and so many things, and I understand what you're saying about kind of bright line standard. But if anyone has a bright line standard, to echo Sullivan Wilson again, property appraisals are very professional, very standard practice. Professional, but the most adequate level that it should commit any market value. Boom, like that's a pretty bright line standard, then stay on our shoreline. Very bright line standard, the period made in ordinary course of building maintenance. The cost of improvements made to reduce the cost of potential flood damage should be exempted. From the definition of standard improvement. As a lawyer, I gotta tell you, that's a bright line standard, you guys can take the path. Like, I just don't see what the problem is here. And I think we can find out building codes and their applicability to this situation involving a floodplain ordinance, I'm frankly, I'm very annoyed. Because it's a very different scenario. You're talking about someone like me, a divorcee, or an eight-year-old woman who's in a house. Basically hit by a hurricane, and suddenly she's got, lift your house up, the cost is seven hundred thousand dollars. There's no willful. You can completely distinguish that scenario, there's nothing willful about that. So laws about distinguishing standards and saying how they're different, that absolutely is distinguishable. And in terms of our attorney on account, and the specific advice that I've made four times now in Greece. This board needs a red line copy, starting with what you started with. Remember that happened was showing every single source, every single change, because the definitions are not as tight as the original floodplain ordinance. I spent about five hours going through, thought of red lines for hard work, so I think. Have that, I mean, all of these can happen, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, so, and any other hands or comments, okay, yes? Yep.
I like the idea of working off the appraisal that's more realistic for the value of. I was gonna say the house, but I'm gonna say the property, because. From my understanding, when you get an appraisal done, and I've had it, you get back the value from the property. And they don't give, they don't separate the value of the house from the value of the.
Yeah.
So, okay, I have that. They're usually comparing it to other houses in the area, so they have to make adjustments. Alright, so that's good, so you would actually have that number, you would have a number that identifies the demand versus the structure. And the back there, what you get from this appraisal, who knows, because they don't. But if they don't, they don't, yeah, so it's not, I don't, I don't.
Yeah, okay, well, so, yeah, that, that, yeah, well.
That's good, that happens. Um, but the other question is. Uh, how do you monitor what people are doing to their houses? Like, I know it's permits for major work, so that probably qualifies as major construction. But I just painted my house last week, I don't think I will be, but yeah.
Well, you did now.
So.
Um, but it's like, you know, you can make yourself inside of your house, you're. Then you can paint, you can do all sorts of stuff, and it's not required that you. I'm, I'm not asking that you require.
But there, 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 there are requirements of what you should get a building permit for, not everybody does. Um, and I think, you know. There are a lot of smaller improvements that people are doing all their time to their homes, that they don't get building permits, and the town does not chase them down. But once they find something significant that is more, you know.
Vision takes them off.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Well, the thing.
Yeah, so, yeah, I know, I think we, unfortunately, we're getting to nine o'clock, and if you, you know. You can email some specific questions about that, um, I understand your. Yeah, yes, yeah.
Lot of work, people.
Yeah.
These things are around important.
Right, 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 right. Right, and so, well, but that's, that doesn't necessarily mean that, um, that's. We're, we're trying to, we're, we're trying to set the rules at least, and not everybody will follow the rules. Um, but, um, so with that, I mean, I appreciate all the, uh, uh, public feedback, obviously the board is very. Um, taking this all into serious consideration, and, um, and we will bring this up at the next meeting with some possible additional changes to the draft ordinance, okay? So with that, um, motion to a move, to adjourn. So moved, all in favor, say aye, okay, thanks. Yeah, thanks.